This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, welcome to the Brighton Central School District Public Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, December 17th. This meeting is called to order. As we do every year, we are on the road again, as Willie Nelson said, and this is the third of our fourth school visits. We are here at Brighton High School in the auditorium, I'm glad to be here. We'll talk a little bit later about the tour we were able to have of the building, see the awesome new gymnasium. But for now, I will, and I'm sorry, we'll be at TCMS at the second meeting in January, that's upcoming, so we'll mention that at the end as well. There is the opportunity in every public meeting for public participation, anyone who would like to come up and make a comment or ask a question of the board or the superintendent. Is there anybody who wishes to do so? Principal Tappan, no? Elsa? Good, thank you. Next up, we will move to the Brighton Believer Awards, and our favorite way to start every meeting, I'll ask Dr. McGowan to take the podium and let us learn about our winners tonight.
So I'm pretty sure this is locked in in one direction, I'm gonna try and move it just a little bit. So my back is not entirely to you, can I ask Demond Davis to please come on up and cap, Kate Davidson if they are here? So Demond Davis, the driver of bus number one was nominated by Kate Davidson last school year. She wrote, "Mr. D demonstrates the Brighton Believers traits as he consistently practices kindness, compassion, and reliability. Every morning when he picks my daughter Evelyn up, he has a big smile on his face and always says good morning and wishes me a good day. He has been such a reliable presence all year, as he, to my knowledge, has only missed one day all year. There was a situation where my daughter had a rubber band bracelet kit in her backpack that she intended to bring to daycare with her after school. She knew she was not supposed to take it on the bus, but did so as she really wanted to show a friend." I don't blame you, but you are being outed publicly right now for this. Unfortunately, the case she was carrying in came unlatched and the small rubber bands fell all over the bus. That is the worst. Evelyn was very upset, as she does not like to get in trouble, and thought Mr. D was going to be upset with her. As she was telling me the story, I said, "Was he upset?" She said, "No," she said with a smile, "No, he told me that I did not have to cry, that accidents happen." Mr. D could have had a very different response in that situation, but he chose kindness and understanding. And because of that Evelyn was able to continue on her day in a positive manner. We are so appreciative of Mr. D and not only his commitment to getting the children of Brighton to school safely each day, but of his wonderfully positive and caring attitude. Demond, thank you so much for all you do, thank you for demonstrating the Brighton Believers, caring for all of our children in this one amazing situation too. Great job.
Thank you.
Tricia Zeller, if you could come on up please, along with Dr. Hall. And Mrs. Paddock, if you'd like to come on up too, please. Also, and nominated by Jeanette Whitmire, Jeanette, would you like to come on up, please? That would be great. Alright. Jeanette, you look a little nervous, it's gonna be okay, I promise. Alright, so Tricia Zeller, Councilor in the Aspire Program at Brighton High School is nominated by Jeanette Whitmire. She wrote, and this is the best showing ever by the way, you have a huge crowd around here. She wrote, "Our family is nominating Tricia Zeller for the Brighton Believers Award for the exceptional work she does with the students of the BHS Aspire Program. Tricia works closely with the students and gives each of them 100%. She has equipped them with tools and skills they would carry with them for the rest of their lives through honest conversation, therapy, and restorative practices. Her compassion and knowledge have proved many times to be invaluable. She takes the time to listen without judgment to her students and work with them to become problem solvers. She has built relationships through trust, kindness, and respect, and expects these to be reciprocated to not only herself, but everyone her students interact with daily. Tricia holds her students to high standards and teaches them to be accountable for their actions and learning. She has given them ownership of their education as well as what their future may hold. In complete transparency, our family wasn't sure BHS was always the right fit for our child. We spent a great deal of time considering all options, and we can honestly say Tricia's work with him is the reason for his success. She has helped him grow into the wonderful person he is, as well as opened his eyes to see himself as a valuable part of this world. We are beyond grateful we chose Aspire because he now has one of the most caring and supportive adults, helping him navigate this difficult period of life. Our hearts are full and will forever be grateful, we will forever be grateful for all she's done for our family. BHS and the Aspire Program are lucky to have someone so dedicated and special working with their students. She is a true example of what it means to be Brighton." Congratulations, Tricia, for being a Brighton Believer, for all that you do to demonstrate those. Listen to that, all about your mom, how amazing and that, pretty incredible, congratulations. Did I hear they're going out for ice cream? Oh, that's fantastic. Good for you. Part of the Brighton Believers Award Program, courtesy of Dr. Hall, everybody should know, he will buy you ice cream.
We're saying Brighton Believers and ice cream.
Yeah, Brighton Believers and ice cream, for sure. I do want to point out, we could not recognize in person tonight Jonathan Zaramba, he was nominated by Menkfen Michelle, she last school year, for his work with her child, being a very caring, thoughtful, supportive person. And we won't read the entire nomination, but hope at some point when he can be here in person, he's off to college, we can invite him here to recognize him publicly, but do want to acknowledge that. And as we always do, just point out that if anybody in our community would like to nominate someone for Brighton Believers Award, VCSD.org/believers, to do that, and these are people in our community, teachers, staff members, students, community members, who make a difference in our children's lives and demonstrate the Brighton Believers values that we hold so dear. So we encourage people to participate in that, and thank the Brighton Believers Council for these selected nominees as well. Thank you.
Next up, I'll make a quick comment and a note of thanks. I see the approval of the amended agenda. For people who don't know this, our agenda between now, and I'll use, January 7th will be our next meeting. It will balloon by three or four items, a couple items we pulled off, and I want to, just a quick note of gratitude for Kim Lanzafame, who's the one who has to juggle this all the time, she'll get a call saying, "Pull this item off, it's actually not ready yet," or "Could you quickly add this item so we get the signature." So I will ask for a quick board round of applause for Kim and all the work she's been doing to get the agenda together. Okay, with that, I will ask you all, if you've had a chance to see the amended agenda, are there any comments, questions, or edits? Motion to approve? Moved by Sue? Seconded by Karen? Okay, it's not as easy to see you all, so just, all those in favor? You also have the minutes from the December 3rd meeting. December, a few minutes, December 3rd, I'm sorry, which include also the December 4th Capitol vote, I had to get that back in my brain. Congratulations to everyone, and our thanks to Lou and his team for putting that all together, as it did pass with a 77-plus percent margin, grateful to our community that came out and voted for that. Any questions or edits with regards to the minutes from the December 3rd meeting? Motion to approve? Moved by Eleanor? Seconded by Carrie Lynn, all those in favor? Before we ask Lou to speak, do you want to say anything else about the Capitol vote?
No, I just think, one, and we have several members of the team here that will be up at the podium, would like to point out, also the leadership you provide, and you probably know regrets turning the microphone over to me because you wouldn't want to hear that, but Larry does such a tremendous job with the OACM group, that committee, but all of the work that's done to figure this out, we're at a really interesting point, I think, in terms of, you know, not to run through each project, but to basically say, over a period of time now, the community has supported doing a tremendous amount of work across the campus. You had a great tour here tonight, I'm sure you'll speak to that. This space that we're in, we point out every year when we're here in the high school, was at the beginnings of this work. The incredible space at Council Rock was at the beginnings of this work, was really kind of the big push off to say, "Okay, we've got great facilities that were maintained well over the years, but it was time to modernize and really take care of these great community assets." And so now, if you go building by building, significant work has been done, or will be done, and has been approved by our community, and we're not stopping there, but we also know that there is now a tremendous amount of work that is both undergone but in the pipeline, and this latest project and that tremendous amount of community support for that allows us to continue to build in the spaces that we need to get them to a place that is equivalent to the incredible instruction that we get every day, and provides the right learning environment for our kids. So we really appreciate the community's support, but all the work that goes into that and everything that everybody here has done to make that happen.
Agreed, this is a great example of a space that the community invested in and got an absolutely fabulous return, including the Novelli Alamo Catwalk up there. We just had a chance to see the gymnasium, which was just completed a month or two ago, looks absolutely fantastic. So we're hitting the arts, we're hitting athletics, and we're hitting academics, and as Dr. McGowan pointed out, that's true for all of the schools. Lou, I'll ask you and the team to come on up and do a review of the Capitol projects, projects plural.
Thank you, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to celebrate the successes of our Capitol projects and to give you a preview of what's coming in these next couple of years, specific to work designed at Brighton High School. Just to piggyback off of what Dr. McGowan said, if we think about what we've been able to achieve since 2017, Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan and the Capitol Project that was just approved, we're gonna complete close to $120 million of capital improvements to our schools with less than a 2% impact on the local property taxes. So that's pretty impressive, we're doing a lot, we're being responsible, and it's a credit to the Board of Education for prudent planning with our capital reserves, you know, and managing our debt responsibly, so credit to the Board of Education. So tonight, we're gonna focus on Brighton High School, and specifically the work that's already been approved by the voters in the 2023-24 Capital Improvement Project Phase 1 and Phase 2. So in Phase 1, which is $19.5 million, you could see the work that's being designed, and actually that's going out to bid in the first week in January. So we'll be bidding that work with hope to put a shovel in the ground this summer, once we award those contracts, the Board of Education could expect to approve those in the February, March timeframe. So you see the scope, that was in Phase 1, and what was approved in Phase 2. Where we are with Phase 2, that's being designed right now, we hope to submit to the State Education Department, who's our permitting agency, that will sit there for a number of months before we're able to bid that, so we're looking at likely 2026 before we can begin the work that's outlined here. So tonight, I'd like to welcome our partners from SEI Design, we have Brian Solinsky and David Hallmark, and certainly John Novelli, our Director of Buildings and Grounds. But I'm gonna invite David Hallmark up to talk about the more details of both Phase 1 and Phase 2, so you get a sense of the programmatic enhancements that we're able to achieve, and some of the design details. So with that, I'd like to invite David up, thank you.
Good evening. First, let me say it is an absolute honor to be a part of this team and working with this district. Every project has been an absolute pleasure and a lot of fun to undertake. Starting off in this project that just went to SED, one big thing that doesn't really get seen but is very important is the boiler room upgrades. Almost everything in that room is at the end of its useful life, outdated and oversized. So part of that modernization will get more efficient, smaller units that will, you know, decrease your energy usage and increase the capabilities for the school. Also is a new elevator that will be finally connecting to the fourth floor for accessibility, and from the front of the building. You can see in the lower part of that plan where the elevator will be impacting that space. So on every floor where this elevator is punching through, from round first, second, and third, or fourth, if you would call it that, as we punch through, we are going through existing classroom spaces, and we'll need to modernize those spaces and make it look like we didn't just shove a hole through the building. And so we'll be taking that opportunity to modernize the adjacent classrooms, upgrading finishes, lights in the corridors, and taking that opportunity to just make the learning environment more modern for the students. Some of these spaces haven't been touched since the 50s. Here is a connection of all the plans to show where on the front that connection is for that new elevator, and then in the colors adjacent to the red, the deep red, is what the adjacent spaces that are being modernized are. From the outside of the building, that blue shaft is what the shaft is going to be, and it is set back from the front of the building, so it is completely enclosed in the building envelope. Out front, we're proposing a ramp to allow people with accessibility needs to get into the building to access the elevator from there, instead of going around the building to one of your other accessible doors. And the project that's going out to bid right now, we are updating the high school and music tech suites and music suites. For here, this music suite, we are taking the opportunity to take your existing footprint, modernize it, we're putting angles in and acoustics that are going to be much better for the existing space for the music program, and accommodate the practice needs and the large scale that you have for your band, choral, and strings programs. You have a lot of students, and so being able to incorporate all their needs and having plenty of practice space is accomplished with this plan. In the tech suite, we are doing a complete gut and renovation. Right now, your shop space is very undersized and very small, and so with this renovation, we're able to enhance the layout of the space and equally distribute per the functions going on. So the actual shop area with machinery and equipment is gonna get exponentially larger, and there is now, on the plan, if you can see, the dash line shows throw area, so you can cut larger sections of lumber in a safe manner, and more students can be doing projects at once in this space. And then north of the plan is the new tech area, kind of like a steam function, and that's being heavily modernized as well, while maintaining your production studio for the news program. Door 20 is going to be getting a secure entry addition. This function will allow all your students to come in at door 20 through that parking lot, which will hopefully relieve some of the stress of parents coming into the bus loop, and allowing that to just be bus drop off for safety, and also kind of creating a better vestibule than just coming into the stair tower, for students to come in, take their attendance, and get checked in and out as you have an open campus. So this is providing us an opportunity to do that, and kind of start to frame the entrance to your existing athletic fields that are back there. Part of the project that's went to SED, a lot of it is multi-use sports fields. As you can see on here, we have baseball and softball, that are gonna have turf with soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, all those sports that right now seem to get canceled when there's a lot of mud, won't have that anymore, and the amount of students that'll be busing to Buckland Park will significantly decrease. So this investment in the turf is huge for your athletic programs and scheduling, especially the amount of programs that, as a district, you provided the community. With this work happening, we, the district purchased land from the church, and there's an easement to share a drive. So in the short term of this project, we are going to be modernizing the layout of the parking lot and dropping the efficiency back so that the existing church entrance is going to be the new entrance shared by the church and the school district, with an accommodation we're providing for the church to have them have their access loop for pre-K, so that we're good neighbors, but also now, since there's a lot of student drivers and we know how safe they are, pulling the access to the parking lot farther away from the street allows those busy periods to be less clustered. And we are currently working with Monroe County Department of Transportation to hopefully bring a traffic light to that in the future. That layout is in the hopes that this can happen, and that's what the design is for.
Thank you, David. Now I'd like to ask Dr. Tom Hall to come up and just hear about the functional impact of some of the design elements, but then also share his priorities and what he's thinking about in the future.
Good job. Evening, and I just want to say thank you to the board for a lot of the space, a lot of autonomy to speak to the designers and to the architects. We have several meetings to talk about that, and meetings on top of meetings and planning, and Dr. Glazer, I think is still in the back there, was huge instrumental in helping with our tech and music suite renovations, which, when they are done, there were certainly a lot of conversations to be had, but they are utilizing every single inch of space because we're not building out, we're not building on, we're using existing space, but truly maximizing that space to have the best possible music and tech program we can offer our kids, so thank you. Thank you Lou and Kevin for all that you do to allow us to have that kind of autonomy as well, it's gonna be an incredible space. I think you know the elevator is necessary, and it's gonna be a huge plus for all of our kids and families coming to various events throughout the day, in the evenings, and in the summer. Our secure entrance, also, if you, I'm not sure if that was shared, it's not only gonna be our secure entrance to the building for students, it's only students during the day. Adults will now go through door 1, or if they need the accessibility, they'll go through the elevator in another year. But door 20 will only be for students and staff, and our attendance office will also be in that space. So attendance, two attendance monitors and our security staff will be in that door. With our open campus, with kids coming and going, late arrival, early dismissal, we're really hoping this will really strengthen our ability to have very accurate attendance, but also to know exactly where our kids are as best that we can with an open campus setting, and monitor that, so that's a huge plus to that. The traffic light, I'm really hoping that's gonna go through, you're not gonna, that's incredible. Our fourth floor renovation, so you saw tonight what was gonna happen, but just to share with the community, not only are we getting an elevator, our bookstore and coffee shop with our 1214 classroom will also be, have a renovation and upgrade, and so that, their ability to sell coffee and merchandise through the bookstore will also not go away, but will hopefully be enhanced. In the future, once these projects are completed, hopefully I'll still be around, library renovations, the lights, the glass, the backing for our big displays where all those wonderful books, where our authors have their books every summer, hoping to have a complete renovation of that so you can actually walk into the display, similar to our Vision Forum Arts displays out here, walk in, instead of climbing up and over, have more space to display, new glass coverings, the whole bit. Pie in the sky, which I'd love to see down the road, there is some very usable space with a beautiful hallway in glass, in the back of the pool hallway, which we don't really use that entrance, but to the side, as talking to the architects, you could fit two classrooms there, we are losing a few, you know, with our inclusive classroom settings that we have, we're always in need of some sort of classroom space, but you could build two beautiful classrooms and make that hallway functional for students or staff to use. Beautiful light, build the classrooms there, that's something we've been talking about for a while now, and then eventually, not a large greenhouse outside, but maybe additional greenhouse, access to grow plants in the, and do other things in the science wing, kind of where it used to be, but not nearly as big, so that's what we're seeing right now, so thank you again. Question?
I was gonna just, no, that's okay. There was a discussion that we learned about beforehand, that we had to consult a historical society with regards to our entrance or affecting that, can someone just quickly talk about that, just so we've got something on record, maybe David?
Yes, so with the elevator touching the outside, the front of the building, 1929, so all the windows that have been replaced since then, but they're still older than 50 years, the New York State Historic Preservation Office has a lot of control over that, and so we were able to circumvent any discussion we need to have with them on touching the outside of your building by setting it back into the building as a shaftway and just ramping up. So it would have been a hurdle otherwise, but yeah, we were able to keep your historic 1929 building untouched and still get the elevator in.
Lou, do you want to just talk about timing, like expected timing based on what we know now for some of this work we just talked about?
Yeah, so Phase 1, like I said, we're gonna be bidding that, and we'll be awarding contracts in the winter months, so February timeframe, and then we will start on the secure entrance way, I think we're starting in April? April. So we're gonna start, you're gonna start, the community's gonna start seeing some work in our parking lot, starting in April, so we can get that built, and it's ready for the start of the next school year. Where we are in the design phase for Phase 2, those will be submitted to SED, hopefully by the end of the month, and then it's a waiting game, it's usually six to eight months to get approval. We'll go through the bid, so we're a year out from being able to do that, so we're really looking at probably the summer of '26 to be able to start that work.
I have a question, just from the parking spaces at the school, are the new piece parking lot, the 47 spaces, is that for the preschool of the church that we talked about, or is that for the Brighton High School additional 47?
So that would be our, so that would be in the back for the athletic complex, so the extent that we have event parking and things like that, we would have that, or student parking ability, but that's our land. We had to be considerate with the easement, you know, for the traffic, so you'll see the, in this area right here, you'll see kind of what the architect's designed to be able to divert traffic that's related to the church and the preschool into this area, and we're moving all the traffic that's related to our high school, or that's coming and going from our high school in this area, in a very safe, in a very safe manner, you know, again, mitigating speed the best that we can. But that all, this back here is all our land, you know, to supplement events, you know, concerts, things like that, but then certainly athletics, graduation.
And that additional light that we're talking to the DOT about, and I realize that nothing is approved yet, that's in addition to the light that exists at Newton, it's not instead of?
Well, what we're looking at, and what the, you know, through SEI Design, we have Fisher Associates who is designing that right now, so they're working through that process, and where we gain support from the county, and I might have Brian talk to this a little bit more, is to be able to move the stoplight down to our entrance way to put in another piece of equipment that would allow for pedestrian, safe pedestrian crossing, it's called a HAWK system, and I think we may have talked about that before. So we would be on the hook for both of those pieces of equipment, including the maintenance costs. In anticipation of that, we transferred a million dollars to the Capitol to reduce our debt and hopefully leverage that, or maybe need another authorization, depending on how we negotiate with the county, to transfer that cost, whether it's through an intermunicipal agreement, or whether it's an outright capital outlay by the district.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for taking the time. Any other comments?
No, just excellent work, I mean, everything I said before is demonstrating what was just presented, this opportunity to really continue to upgrade the spaces and get to a better place, and the hard work that everybody did to get us there, and to make these plans, so thank you.
Alright, next up is principal reports, we're at the high school, so probably makes sense to have Danielle kick us off.
Sorry about my glasses, so I can't see each other.
Alrighty, good evening.
Alrighty, good evening. It's very bright here. It's very bright. I just woke up. Sorry, Tom. We've had a lot happen in the last month, starting off with the last week that I reported to you in November, which was when we had our, it's not blowing, it's not going anywhere. I'll tell you all about it. So, we had our performance of Frozen, which took place here in the high school, and it was really exciting. I had a conversation with somebody who was going to see the show on Saturday night and said, you know, "I'm just going because I want to see the kids, but I've really seen it so many times, like, whatever, you know, it's another, another performance of Frozen." And then after the performance, she texted me and said, "You were so right, it was the absolute..." You know, the students overcame many obstacles to get this performance together, and they did not disappoint. And I was talking to my son, my own son, my 14-year-old about it, and I said to him, "You will never experience the high that you have at the end of a performance." You know, all the time that you work together and the camaraderie, and that everybody has a role and everybody puts a piece into it, and what it comes out at over three nights is just absolutely amazing. So, kudos to everybody involved, it was the best performance of Frozen Junior ever. We also celebrated at our November faculty meeting a dedication of our courtyard restoration. I told you a little bit about this last year, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Alumni Association of almost $4,500. And while this may not look spectacular in the image to you, what I want you to realize is that there were, there were 11 trees in that courtyard at one point, and we took eight of them out thanks to the Alumni Association, and had the entire surface regraded and resodded. So, you're seeing the very beginnings of the start of a renovation of our courtyard. We've got some tables and chairs set out there in the nice weather for faculty and staff and students. We have students going out during lunchtime, we have classes that go out there and are enjoying the time. It's really just a nice space, and our Green Thumb Club with Mr. Elkins this year is taking it on the spring and is going to be beautifying it with some plants and some foliage. So, we're really excited to make this a usable space, and hopefully maybe someday down the line do some performances out there as well, musical and theatrical. Just a typical day, wanted to show you what a typical day is like for Science VII in our school. Our teachers, our three science teachers at seventh grade are doing a phenomenal job of orienting the science curriculum around phenomena-based instruction. So, here's an example of students doing a lab with dry ice, and you can look at their faces, like, there's not much more to say than that. It's just, it's spectacular, and it's all investigatory, and there's not a time that you walk into a science classroom, particularly Science VII, where it's not hands-on and the students aren't engaged, making their own meaning, which is fantastic. We've got a continuation of our reading with our friends at CRPS. We've gone for the last two months now, we have about eight students that are heading over with Mrs. Peters, and just the best time ever. Again, look at their faces, there's not much more to say there. We're really continuing to love our time with the win and the homeroom wraparound of our day, and here's just an example of something that comes out of it organically. This was two of our homerooms that often get together during wintertime, and they decided they wanted to celebrate their own Friendsgiving, and they all brought in treats, and they celebrated just some time to be together, and I think that's what we appreciate so much about our home-based time is the community building that happens. Sometimes we call it forced family fun time, and sometimes it shows up like this, where it's just very organic and driven by the students. And so, we really appreciate the work that's happening there. Here's another example of our community building that we have, ENL Thanksgiving. I think this was our 12th ENL Thanksgiving that we hosted at TCMS. And this year, we have probably more newcomers and non-English speakers than ever, and to watch the students and their families sitting with their phones out and Google Translate and communicating, and just loving the food as the joining piece, but being with each other was fantastic. So, kudos to our ENL teachers and for the students for all the work that they did to help put this together. Every year, Mrs. Coyle's been taking our extended studies students over to the Maker Fair. This year, it was at RIT because they moved the, what's it called? Yeah, the technology, the Nice Gate, Nice Gate, Nice Gate Conference, thank you. The Nice Gate Conference is usually downtown every year in November, but they moved that to Syracuse this year, so the Maker Fair was pushed over to RIT. But our students went, you could see they had a ton of fun. This year's theme was all around Star Wars, so we had lots of fun pictures with them enjoying their day. Concert season is upon us. We had last week, our choir started off, we had our choruses and our, our show choir, and then last night, we had our orchestra concert, and tomorrow night, we have our three bands. This is kind of an awesome little brag here, Sam Luger is one of our, he's a seventh grader at TCMS, and he competed, he was in Italy for two weeks, he competed in an international chess competition, and he had an amazing time. He scored, he wound up being sixth out of 150 students in the world, and he was the number one US competitor in the competition. So, it's pretty awesome. He had a fantastic job, fantastic time there, obviously meeting people from around the world, but also competing and representing TCMS. December, the last couple of weeks have been a ton of fun for students, even in all of the craziness. We had a staff spirit week last week, and I don't know who had more fun, the kids or the staff, there was just so much laughter, it was hysterical. This week, the students are involved in the spirit week along with the staff, so we had lots of red and white today. We're also selling candy grams as a fundraiser, and the students are really, like, I'm looking at some of the letters that they're writing to each other, and one that I saw today was a student who wrote to another student and said, "I know we've had our differences, but it's the holiday season, and let's put that beside us." And I just thought, like, that's what it's all about. So, so much fun and caring also in the holiday season. This month, our report is on our work around mental health and wellness, and as I tell everybody, middle school is all about mental health and wellness. If we are not taking care of that, nothing else is happening. So, it's our focus every day and all day long. We continue our home-based lessons, we continue all our work with individual and group counseling. We've revamped our culture and climate leadership committee, I think I talked about that previously, so that every student is tapped at least once during the year to represent their grade level and give voice to things that they appreciate about TCMS, but also want to see be done differently. We're really reaping the benefits of our Aspire program. We're seeing attendance up dramatically with students who are in the program. We also, just like a little anecdote, we had a student who unfortunately was engaged in an altercation off-campus today, and the place that he came back to was TCMS to get help after school, and it was about four o'clock. And so, this is a student in our Aspire program who's struggling with school avoidance, and the fact that the place that he chose to go to was the school shows me that, you know, we're making great strides in the work that we're doing. So, kudos to Betsy and to Erin for the work that they're doing with students. Michelle Peters is doing a bang-up job with the mentoring connections with BHS. We've got two different groups going there, and then also the reading at Council Rock, URMC Partnership. We just met with them again in our bi-hour monthly meeting, and that was yesterday, and we talked about how Dr. Haley's continuing to push to see if we can get additional days added in the future. Right now, we have folks coming two days a week, and our hope is that in the future, we can even have three and maybe four days a week at TCMS. It's an invaluable partnership. They are also helping us launch an anxiety support group for students and families, which we have at least 10 students signed up for right now. We're continuing our Monique Burr lessons in health and PE. Of course, we've talked about Red Ribbon Week and our spirit weeks and our holiday gatherings for staff. We did do a nice little staff get-together before Frozen Junior at TCMS. A bunch of us went out to dinner beforehand, and then we had a whole bunch of seats together where we could watch the show together. And then club connections, Ms. Edwards has done a phenomenal job this year with helping with advertising for clubs and making sure that kids know what is going on, when, and always. And our membership in clubs has gone up, and I'll share our numbers with you in the future, but we've seen a significant increase in our club membership this fall. Concert season, as I said, we've got December break coming up. We'll be doing our mid-year benchmark assessments for AIS students. We have a Martin Luther King Junior Day Assembly. Calvin Eaton is coming to work with our students, and we're gonna have a nice panel, a student panel of discussion and focus on what Martin Luther King means to TCMS and how we see his legacy in the work that we do every day at TCMS, and what else we would hope to see. We have our five-go-six orientation already, I cannot believe it, on January 21st, and then a few days later, Dr. Hall will be welcoming our eight-go-nine students over to the high school for their orientation. We have the last day of the marking period already, January 24th. Tom Kirsting is coming to visit on January 27th, another thing that we're super excited about. He's gonna talk to all of our students at both TCMS and BHS about the impact of technology on student health and well-being. And he also, on January 27th, is going to talk and be available to the entire Brighton community. So, all families are gonna be invited, and parents are gonna be invited to learn about the impact of technology, particularly cellphones, on student health. Of course, we have our Asian Lunar New Year, and then our first world language trip of the year is the Quebec trip, where they'll be heading for the Winter Festival. So, lots going on.
Questions for Danielle? Another great update, thank you very much. Colleen?
All right, we have had a busy few weeks since our last board meeting and a couple updates, sorry about that. Couple updates of what's been happening at French Road. On Sunday, we had an exciting event where Mrs. DeChili's fourth-grade class, they worked on essays on the perception of the animal at Lollipop Farm, and they wrote essays on why they should be adopted and why you should take those animals home. Channel 13 went and joined the kids at Lollipop Farm on Sunday, where the kids got to meet the pups that they wrote their essays about, and they were very excited. It was just fun to see the class come together. I think there are about 12 students and families that were able to join Mrs. DeChili. So, right here, you see the kids writing their essays, and you can see one of the ones that was going to be hung up in one of the, one of the dog pens, I believe it was. So, it was very exciting, and I believe it was on Channel 13 tonight. So, if you can go back and look at the recap of the news, it was just fun for the kids to be able to put that out there for the community. In the classrooms, it was funny, I was walking around the other day, and you know, you think about school, you think about kids sitting at their desks and looking and, you know, listening to a teacher, and every single classroom I walked into, kids were on the floor, they were up on the counters, they were up on the boards. There was no full-class instruction going on at the time, it was all kids interacting and engaging. You see some of the building, the building-thinking classrooms, math activities happening in the top picture as well as on the right, and in the bottom up, the kids were doing research on some books that they were reading. It's just fun, kids watching, kid watching and seeing them learn from each other and teach each other, and having the teachers interact with the kids in such a different way. So, there's a lot of fun learning going on despite all the magic and excitement in the schools. Our mental health team has been working on their bullying unit, and in fifth grade, the kids are working on different posters on what it means to be an upstander versus a bystander, and what bullying is. Some of the classrooms are using Canva and are doing some digital presentations and posters around the building. Other kids are doing pictures, and we had some kids writing essays. So, this week and moving into after-break, the kids will be doing morning announcements about what it means to be a good friend, what it means to do the right thing in the classroom. So, it's fun watching our mental health team step in and work with the kids in different presentations. Leading into Thanksgiving break, we had a community come in and work on taekwondo with our kids, and it was great to see a former Fuzz student lead our students in gym classes through this. So, you can see the kids were up and moving, teachers were in and out of the gymnasium. This is a real fun time for the kids each fall. Prior to break, we also had our teacher-student swap day. This was the result of our election that we had at French Road on Election Day. As you can see, we have a lot of Mrs. Whiticks up there in the top corner, we had a lot of Mrs. Cossoffs. Kids came in, they were so excited to be their teachers, they made their badges, they had all of the things, you know, their coffee cups, they had their books, they had their computers, and it's just fun to watch the kids just look up to the people that they're with each day. And on the foot, the teacher's dressed up like the kids. So, it's just great to see the smiles and see the interactions between them. Keeping the magic alive with staff, we've been trying to do a whole bunch of things with kids as well as staff. Some of our fifth-grade teachers created a winter break checklist of fun things to do for the 10 days leading up to break. So, yesterday, the entire staff was covered in green. I believe tomorrow is a big whiteout, and everyone's dressing for snow, and the kids have been jumping on board and joining in on the dress-down days as well. We've also started a sense of belonging activity with our staff with secret pal themes, and what the teachers are doing is if you want to participate, they're having a secret pal last the entire year. Little tiny things, a note in mailbox, bring a hot coffee, bring tea, and there's a little theme each month that people are doing, so we're seeing little surprises pop up around the building. The PTSA continues to bring joy to our faculty meetings before Thanksgiving. They gave us a slice, any way you slice it, teachers and staff are the best, and we had some donations of Leo's pies, and teachers had a slice of pie before they got into our faculty meeting. The faculty meeting in November was more of our inclusive language protocol, and if you take a quick look at the picture, you'll see the roadmap that we are working on. And it's about reporting, echoing, teaching, and all the things that we do as we work through harmful language in the classrooms and on the playground and where things are happening. So, you can see teachers interacting and engaging with our presenter, Svetlana Kyle from Poseus. We're on our second phase of our protocol, and we're going to continue to revise and hopefully have our final teacher protocol in place in January. We've learned that we really would like to tweak it, once we get it in the kids' hands. This might be a little bit more adult-directed, so we will have an adult version and a kids' version as well. So, I'm hoping in the January or February board meeting, I can talk through more of what we're doing more specifically. When it comes to mental health, wellness, and student support, when you look at the things that we're working on at Fuzz, I think everything really showed up in the pictures that I showed tonight. Working on the inclusive language protocols, fostering joy and sense of belonging with the staff, with what we're doing with our secret pals, with working with one another in the classrooms, and just interaction with our staff. They had a little holiday gathering this evening, actually, so it was nice to see everyone outside of school just enjoying each other's company. We're continuing to identify how we can work with URMC on the mental health and wellness of our staff, how we're using our tier-one support with our Bruins time in the classroom. Our mental health teachers have also been, our counselors and social workers have been working on communication with parents too, just to bring parents on board with what they're working on in the classroom. So, they're just trying to work on some monthly updates that they can send home, just to bring parents into those conversations as well. As we move into January, I put the dates leading up to the next board meeting, but we do have our break, we have our extracurricular fair that I believe will be at Council Rock the first week, the first week in January. We're just heading into our concert season. We had our first concert on Wednesday, our red and blue band this past week, and the rest of our concerts will be in January, I believe the 14th, the 15th. And then we have Martin Luther King Day, so it's hard to believe we're talking about January when we still have two weeks and a long break ahead of us. And then also, as you know, we did have a little excitement in the building on Wednesday with our evacuation. The staff did a remarkable job getting the kids out, making sure everyone was accounted for. Dr. Glazer was there, thankfully, so we had another hand on duck as well, working with the local fire department. We're going to continue to brief as a team on Thursday. It was a little cold, but all of our protocols were in place, and everyone was where they needed to be, and we were able to get everyone home safely. A little cold, but everyone got home safely.
I think we mentioned this before, but I'll quickly add, we saw a new gym here tonight. I also want to acknowledge one more time the new gym you have, and the patience your teachers demonstrated until that was able to be opened, because the French Road gym also looks awesome. So, congrats to your team, but also thanks for their patience during that process. Any other questions or comments for Colleen? Principal Tappin?
So, since we last met, we had a celebration, the second-grade teachers and students studied Balloons Over Broadway just before, so it's a book that talks about the history of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, and then they recreated, or created floats for, and did a parade that day before Thanksgiving. So, here are a couple of the pictures, there were some great bills, representation, just everything you can think of, and the kids got... And the kids got to decide and design what that looked like. Something, I added this slide probably since the one that you have, but, so our 15-1 class led by Christine Hodgson did a huge research project on service animals. And it was really great, student-led, so they did information. And then, as a team effort, one of our OTs, Mrs. DiMaggio, contacted her group that she works with. She volunteers at an equestrian center. So we had the Rochester Police Equestrian Mounted Police come and speak to our kids. So this was like a celebration. The students in the 15-1 got to teach their general ed peers what they had learned, and then we brought this, and then the horses actually came. And the kids got to understand what the role was, what care looked like. It added to the presentation that our students gave. And then they got to pet the horses, and it was pretty magical to watch all of this happen. It was really great. I had to make sure that everyone knew that there was no emergency at Council Rock. But it was really neat to see the kids and to see those 15-1 students really shine in an integration and mainstreaming possibility. So I talked to, or we had that great presentation by our Fulbright Scholars. I was able to attend at University of Rochester last week, it must have been, as they completed and shared their action research that they did, the projects that they did while they were here. So I was able to go and cheer on our Council Rock friends and then also those who are at TCMS and represent Brighton to make sure they knew how much we're proud of them and how much incredible work that they did. And they talked about, which I thought was really great, how much impact one educator usually has. And then they say it's about 2,000 people that you touch. And they talked about what the entire group of Fulbright Scholars was going to go out and into the world. And they're pretty exceptional people, so they'll probably even do more than the 2,000. So it was great to see them. A little bit of an emotional goodbye for our kids, but then also for us, because they were such a valuable part of our community while they were here. But I've already heard, actually, I know, so an example, Michelle was in Ms. Davis's music class, and they FaceTimed with her on one of her layovers on the way back to Singapore to wish her, the kids said, "Can we just FaceTime with her so that we can wish her happy travels and safe travels?" So I know that that connection is gonna continue and that there are already plans in place once they are back working in their own countries to share their teachers and some of their students with us as well when they get back, just a continued connection. So, mental health, wellness, and student support, our Wellness Lounge is actually up and running. I think I have pictures of that that are coming up, but it is a really great space that was designed by our wellness team led by Katara Reedhead and Kim Ball, and we have tea, we have all kinds of cool stuff. The other thing that we are doing, kind of to keep staff engaged and actually kids engaged, is the, you know, you know that traditional Guess Who game? So our staff has all submitted photos of when they were young, and it is up on our TV. And you will often see kids standing, adults standing, to see who the people are, see if you recognize. It's amazing staring at it. I'm like, "I know those eyes, but I don't know who that is." Yeah, exactly. So we've got, and everyone who submitted will be part of that, and then I put it in the Tappin Times at the end of the week to give the answers, and we've had lots of great discussions. Here are some pictures of the Wellness Lounge. It's just a really great space. We have music, calming music playing, there's a tea station. It's really cool. They also organized a community art project that is gonna hang in there, so they have paint and things like that to be able to go in, and everybody can contribute to it, and eventually it will go up so that everyone has ownership in that. And then just some activities while people are taking a break, take their mind off of things, a puzzle, they've got all kinds of different activities. And it's been really, really well-received, and teachers have really, and staff have really taken advantage of it. So we've got Stay in Your PJs and Read Day. We hope we see some of you there, if you have a chance to stop by. Holiday recess, obviously, is next couple of weeks, school reopening. When we get back, we've got a busy couple of weeks as well. Our second-grade movie night is that first Friday. I don't know what the movie is yet, PTSA hasn't told me, but I'm sure it's gonna be a great one. The doors open at 5:30 and movies at 6:00. And then, much like the other buildings, we're already starting, as we roll into 2025, to think about next year and welcoming our new kindergarten families, our new kindergarten parents for an information night. And then we've got Martin Luther King Junior Day and Lunar New Year that are coming up before January is over. So, any questions? That is correct, 2038. Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to think so, but I gotta go to the man. Dr. Lou's meeting. Dr. Hall?
Thank you very much. All right, so going back to Thanksgiving, this is the third year of the class of 2026, several, it seems to grow every year, but the guys who come back and have their own Thanksgiving dinner in the cafeteria, they did not disappoint again. Everybody bringing something to share at the table, giving grace, thankful, they went around the table giving thanks to everything, and I just think this is an awesome experience. During lunch, during their lunch, flex time, actually, that was how they spent their day before Thanksgiving, and complete with a turkey even, which is always fun to watch, and they pick up everything afterwards, and, you know, very well done. Thanks to Lance Mitchell and Friends of Rachel, they sponsored our Purple Week, which was last week. Activities every day of the entire week, some theme days, over 15 clubs, sponsored events specific to this week that kids could join. These were posted all over the building. We had a lot of kids attend various events. One of the most popular events, of course, was the Ice Cream Social that the school helped sponsor. Friends of Rachel had the servers, did a great job. A lot of, you know, their whole point of the whole week is kindness and inclusion and peace. And they were down there, we went through tubs and tubs and gallons and gallons of ice cream, but a lot of students partook. And they all signed, something that I remember doing at French Road, the Purple Hands pledge that they wouldn't use their hands or words to hurt each other or themselves. And that was something they posted in the cafeteria as well. There were more students having their ice cream. And then, part of on Friday, a gamers' club, the Brighton-on-Board Gaming Club, sponsored several different activities in the lower library, as they do, and work together. Our annual trip to EMCC, we'll be doing the seniors in January, but Dr. Rio joined me this year. We went to EMCC in the afternoon classes, our juniors, for the construction trades, collision repair, the welding program, and we saw the hair and nail tech. New facilities, phenomenal program. Again, thank you to our board for supporting so many students. We have about 45 students in EMCC between junior and senior year, and they will leave with a degree. They can still go on to college, or they can take their trade and move on to an apprenticeship or move on and start work. But it's an amazing program, and these kids were really excited to be there, and just it's always fun to see them in action. And I know a lot of you take a trip there during the year, too. This week, before the holidays, we have our Spirit Week going on, sponsored by our Culture Climate Leadership Team, the JEC Council. There's activities and themes all week long. Tomorrow kicks off with a morning giveaway. We'll be giving students things as they walk into the building in the morning at door one and 20. And then we will be having a Battle of the Bruins trivia night right after school. And there'll be the senior picture in the gym. And as we move on to Friday, there'll be an assembly where we honor our winter sports and athletes, as well as VPA, Science Olympiad, math team, and several other honors as we get together and have fun with activities in the gym, in our brand-new gym for the first assembly that we've had. While students walk in, they're gonna get this sticker on a Dunkin' card that we got given, donated to us, that $5 per card, and the kids will get to sign up for more prizes, Bruins gear on Thursday during the assemblies, all part of our sense of belonging and getting into our final, the mental health and wellness of our students and staff. So that is one of the events, I wanna move on. Our Brighton support team, we are continuing an attendance campaign. We'll be rolling that out in January, but that's something we started last year, but really hitting it again in the new year. It's kind of a New Year's resolution. The winter celebration week, and the prizes and the drawings and the fun, trying to get that. Again, everybody has something that they can do here, hopefully have fun with something that we're sponsoring, all put together by the students. And, let's see, working on our, we wanna go from 80% of our students involved in clubs and activities to 85% when we do our spring survey. That's really our goal. We'd love to get to 90, but we're shooting for 85 this year. Don't forget, Mamma Mia will be our next big show in February. And as Dr. Edmund shared, we have the class of 2029 entering the high school at the end of January for their, we'll brighten this room with their families and students. We now are inviting all the students and their families to come with them. We want everybody here, there's gonna be a panel of seniors to talk to them, and we just feel having the students and parents together is probably the best of both worlds, so we'll be doing that. And for the first time, we'll be actually having a celebration of the Lunar New Year. And prior to that day getting off, we'll be talking, from school, we'll be talking about why we have that day off and what the Lunar New Year is. So excited about that. Any questions?
A full calendar, as always. Comments or questions from the board? Thank you very much, and thank you for hosting us tonight. The gym looks absolutely fantastic, and I think Eleanor alerted me to the fact that the girls won tonight. They were playing in there, and they beat around the clock, so.
Fantastic.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Always a ton of stuff going on, and we appreciate the principals taking time to give us those updates. Next up, we have, and we've been briefed on this, approval for modification of titles for two people that I want to give Dr. McGowan a chance to talk about that for just a second.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So two individuals, both of them could not be here tonight, so we're looking forward to celebrating with them in person, but also looking at them in the livestream, saying we hope you're hearing this and hearing us speak so highly of your work, are going to have their titles changed with your action tonight. The first is Deanna Spagnola, currently Director of Student Services, will become Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. And the second is Caitlin Feeny, currently the Assistant Director of Student Services, will be named Director of Special Education and Mental Health Services. And for both of them, I would say to all of those listening, and where we will communicate this later, but to both of them, this is a result of their work, of their value to the organization, a better description, quite honestly, of the work that they currently do and their role in the organization, and something that we would like to do to recognize that and to really, again, better organizationally identify exactly what they do and their role in the district. They're both incredibly talented, have demonstrated unwavering dedication to our kids, to the district, a deep commitment to making sure that every child has what they need every day in every way. We will review over the next six months or so, the duties assigned to both, and more comprehensively look at that organizational structure and what types of assignments they're responsible for to ensure that that is better aligned. But right now, feel as though the only change afoot, without changing anything else, is titles in your action, we'll just simply change that tonight, again, to better reflect the work they do and their status in the organization. So we thank both of them, we celebrate them, even though they're not in the room. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to reorganize in this way.
On behalf of the board, as a team, we get to meet with Deanna on a regular basis and appreciate the breadth of work she's taken on and the great number of kids, both heard Caitlin, obviously, benefit. So any other questions or comments from the board in this regard? Motion to approve the resolution for the modification of titles. Moved by Karen? Seconded by Sue? All those in favor? Next up, we have an approval of memorandums of agreement between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Teachers Association. These, you've seen these memorandums to support students in the seal of, by literacy, that's how I say that. Questions with regards to this resolution? Motion to approve? Moved by Eleanor? Seconded by Carrie Lynn? All those in favor? Finally, approval of an employment agreement. This is an agreement to provide benefits for her companyist. She is working enough that we should be supporting her in this way. Questions with regard to this agreement? Motion to approve? Moved by Sue? Seconded by Karen? All those in favor? We have three different first-read policies that you've all had a chance to look at. These are obviously a first read. I'll read each of them with their number and then present them all for approval. First, Policy 7513, medication and personal care items. Policy 7521, students with life-threatening health conditions. And finally, Policy 5661, wellness. Any questions with regards to any of these three first-read policies? Motion to approve? Moved by Carrie Lynn? Seconded by Christina? All those in favor? Finally, on the consent agenda, we have some fundraising activities, as we like to say, great opportunities to support our students and eat. Friends of the Arts in Brighton has a bingo band night, that's actually tomorrow night. Class of 2025, Five Guys on Monroe, which is also tomorrow. And the Wrestling Boosters have an Applebee's Pancake Breakfast in Henrietta on January 5th. Finally, some field trip approvals, all of them look great. You can see these three here, rather than have me read through them. Any questions with regards to this consent agenda? Motion to approve? Moved by Sue? Seconded by Eleanor? All those in favor? It is harder to see, I apologize, everyone. Before we adjourn, as always, I want to first thank, I'll note that as a board, we show up, we sit down, our name cards are in place, we have working microphones, all the audio and video is set up, and for that, we have Jack, Mike, Asher, and Bill to thank, so a quick round of applause for them, greatly appreciate that. Also, we don't thank him enough, I want to thank Dan and Kim for all the work they do behind the scenes between meetings so that all these things can go, we can get pictures and things posted, so people have great transparency. Finally, I'll say our next meeting is January 7th. We will be in the new year, and I hope everyone has a great holiday. But Dr. McGowan, anything else you'd like to add?
No, just, I know that every year, and every month, in fact, our staff has done a really great job of talking about the different holidays and traditions that people have throughout the community. And this month is certainly no exception for many people in our community celebrating. We hope that everybody enjoys that time with family and friends, those celebrating, those not, those just having extra time together or thinking about their family and their own cultural traditions at home. So we wish everybody the best and thank all of you, and wish all of you the best as well.
Great. With that, motion to adjourn. Moved by Karen? Seconded by Carrie Lynn? All those in favor? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.